Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the second session of the Mayor and Council for our 7:00 PM regular session. We already set our pledge of allegiance and had our moment of silence, so we're going to get right into the order of business, which is Agenda Item Number One, which is the approval of Minutes 1A for the work session on February 14th, 2022.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion by Councilmember Ner.
Second.
A second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the Director reflect that the work session minutes for February 14th, 2022 passed unanimously, with all councilmembers present except for Councilmember Barrell. Up next is Agenda Item Number 1B, which is the approval of the regular session minutes for February 14th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilmember Horace.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the Director reflect that the approval of the minutes for the regular session for February 14th, 2022 passed unanimously, which, once again, all councilmembers in favor, and Councilmember Barrell down. Agenda Item Number Two is swearing in Jonathan Hill for the Board of Towns Berlin Housing Review Board. And, say if you can come forward. Okay. Alright. Okay, so we will move that Agenda Item to a subsequent meeting, and then Agenda Item Number Three is the Community Bike Ride. Economic and Community Development Director Ivy Wells is going to run point.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. Thank you.
Tonight, I am here to seek approval for a new town event that we have been working with for the last several months with the Worcester County Bike and Pedestrian Coalition, and tonight, in support of this, also in attendance is Patty Stevens and also Tom Simon. And just a brief review on why this is so important, and also, especially the date. So, May is National Bike Fund, and it's promoted by the League of American Bicycleists, and has been celebrated in communities from coast to coast since 1956. National Bike Month is a chance to showcase the many benefits of bicycling and encourage more people to give biking a try. 2021 was the first year that Worcester County Bike and Pedestrian Coalition planned and co-hosted rides with local communities. In 2022, community bike rides will be held on these dates in the following locations: on May 14th in Snow Hill and Pocomoke City, and May 21st in Ocean Pines. And tonight, we are seeking approval for our community bike ride to be in Berlin on May 20th, the start time of 7:00 PM. I've worked with the Berlin Police Department, specifically Fisher, on the bike route, which you can find in your packet. I've also talked with Chief Downing about the proposed bike route, and he is in favor of it. Patty Stevens has also given us the okay to have a number of volunteers to assist us, as Tom Simon, who is, he worked on my bike, he's, his business is helping promote bike safety, and he will also be in attendance that evening.
Thank you. I'd like to discuss the bike route a little bit, if possible. Is there any way that we could extend this into other communities or other neighborhoods in Berlin, to take advantage of possibly, like, Decatur Farms, and maybe the Flower Street neighborhood with the bike route?
I would definitely say no Decatur Farms, because we don't want anyone going across the highway. We would like to be quick as possible. So, again, when we actually look at the times, we don't want it prolonged, and we want to go ahead and make sure we have enough personnel to go ahead and be there in case some of these are suspended. So, duration makes a difference.
So, do you think that maybe in a subsequent year, are we okay with our streaming?
Yes.
Okay. You're right. Maybe in subsequent years, if this is a success, which I don't see why it wouldn't be, could we extend the bike route to maybe cross the highway and go through Decatur Farms and into other neighborhoods in Berlin?
I would come back with a no cross the highway, but I think, again, they can do a separate ride actually in Decatur Farms, or some other things, but definitely building on it is always what we do on events. Again, if it's something that they see that can be added, we haven't seen any issues the year before, we're definitely in full support of them, you know, really, if they're branching out as much as they want to.
And also, the focus of this particular bike ride, specifically this route, is we wanted it to promote the upcoming BikeWays grant that we're working on, Dave Inglehart, to, we were going to put signs up where the potential bike route, or pedestrian route is going to be, so people will become familiar with it, as connecting between Heron Park and where Burley Oak is, and Bern, and Forgotten 50 Distillery, to be able to connect that part of town to downtown.
I agree, but we're also, the same way we're looking at MDOT funding for Rails to Trails, we're also looking at trying to find ways to show that it's important to have safe ways to cross the highway, and how the highway can be a barrier sometimes to crossing between neighborhoods. So, if, even if it is a logistical hurdle, right, I think it's important for us to identify that, because it is an appropriate means for saying in the future that this is something we want to overcome.
Agree, 100% agree, and when we start planning, hopefully, the potential Flower Street Festival in September with We Heart Berlin, that's one of the things we're going to focus on. So, this particular bike ride is specifically focused on the BikeWays grant, which it also, for those who don't know, is also known as Rail and Trail, because it's not, it's not on the trail, it's going, it's not on the, on the rail, it's going to be parallel to the rail. So, we call that Rail and Trail. The reason we call it the BikeWays grant is because that's the specific name of what the grant is called, just for everyone, just to be clear on that.
So, I have a question or two. I'm sorry, were you?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, question or two. Where, and I may have missed this, where are the volunteers going to be? And will they be, like, on the blue, what, what, the volunteers?
Oh, right, right. There, everyone's going to be stationed at Heron Park. It's going to begin at Heron Park and end at Heron Park.
So, the bike, the bike route does not have any volunteers on it?
Correct. Or, I don't know, that, I'll, I'll ask Patty that question.
We've done bike rides here, and Tom has led them, we've, I've ridden in them on two different holiday rides, where we rode as a group through town on a road not unlike this, and we rode as a pack with a ride leader and a person at the end of the caboose, sort of, with lights and music to keep the group together. We did not, in those previous rides, have volunteers at crossings, all crossings in other towns, in Pocomoke and in Ocean Pines, as we're planning that, because there are two places in those two community rides where they are going to cross a major road. Public safety is involved with a car with lights, and officers crossing the path as they go through that intersection. As Chief described, it's not, not going to be a strung-out, you know, hours-long route, it'll be a small pack riding together through the route.
And the total route is only five miles.
And how many are you, you're hoping?
Well, to give you a range of numbers, we had 27 in the first year, last year in Snow Hill, we had 75 in Ocean Pines, and we had about 18 in Pocomoke City, and I would think Berlin, the holiday rides we had.
The holiday ride we had this year had over 60 people, and it was freezing. It wasn't cold, man.
So, then, you don't know anything, there's no, nothing painted on the roads, and so you just follow the?
It's such a short route, it's not like, it's not like a century, or like a serious, like, you know, race where you need all that support. I will have my bike truck that is loaded with, you know, tools and parts, that will be at Heron Park, so if anybody does need a quick fix before we go out, that's, you know, under the care of.
We'll make sure that volunteer riders are familiar with the route, and that there is a well-marked person in an orange vest with lights on their bike, you know, leading the path that people will follow.
I just have a general concern about West Street, because I know that, you know, we've had discussions about folks walking up and down there at night, and this is at 7:00, so it's, I'm sure.
It'll still be light out.
Yeah, I'm sure Chief and Ivy have, and you know, and you folks have worked on that, but, you know, we've had concerns about the spacing of the street just in general, and walkers, and with bikers, I, I know you will, I'm just stating, please just keep that in mind as well. That's all I have.
I'm sorry, can I ask you to repeat the date? I got May and 7:00 PM, but what was the?
20.
Okay, thank you.
It's Friday evening, and we were having some discussion about the time, and felt that the 7:00 PM would be an adequate time, it would be an ideal time, because of the two successful evening bike rides that happened before, the Holiday Parade lighted bike ride was pretty awesome. I mean, every, you know, they let everyone know they were coming, and people were outside of their houses, I mean, I was outside waiting, I couldn't ride that night, but I enjoyed it.
Any additional questions regarding the community bike ride? If not, we are seeking approval of this this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the Berlin Bike Ride.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ner.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pernell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the Director reflect that community bike rides have passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we look forward to riding. Up next is Agenda Item Number Four, which is our Midyear General Fund and Enterprise Fund Updates by our Finance Director Natalie Sled.
Good evening, everybody. Six months into the year fiscal 22, just a quick highlights of our actual first budget for, the six months ended December 31st, 2021 of the calendar year. Just a reminder of our funds, the general fund, we start from the beginning, is our fund, operating fund of the town. It's account, account for all of the financial resources that are not, belong to the utility funds. Mostly revenues derived from taxes, grant, licenses, and permit, and all of the amounts reported as they received, not on a cold basis. Here, we have fiscal 22, our budget, and actual numbers, with the differences in the dollar signs, and the percentages, and just for comparison, it's the same snapshot of our fiscal 21, which is last fiscal year. All of the amounts are presented for six months as of December 31st. The revenue project budgeted for fiscal 22 at 7.2 million, and as of right now, we are showing 7.1. That is included in our ARPA grant, which is an amount of 2.2 million. This is a line that you see contributed revenues grants, which has a big difference in numbers and percentages. Property taxes are collected at 3.2. We have 913,000 left to collect to complete the budget amount. Licenses and permits are in line, and 58% left. We have several charges and other revenues and grants, impact fees, so overall, if we take in the ARPA amounts out, we have 7 million, 7.2 budgeted, we are 2.3 million collected as of right now. Where the revenues coming from, those amounts are broken down by what we have budgeted in fiscal 22. The major amount is 57%, is from property taxes. We have intergovernmental revenues, which are grants and contributed revenues from other governments at 14%. Service charges to other funds, 11%, those conclude our overhead and the reimbursement for rest of service. We also have earnings on investment, which is our interest revenues, and we have contribution from reserve. We had a transfer budget amendment to the budget later on from impact fees to cover some of the street projects. Expenses for general fund, we have general government, we have 58% remaining, budgeted at 1.9, actual is 818 spent, the difference in the dollar signs and the percent, just to understand the line items. Public safety, we have 48% left, public works at 59. Planning and community development, exactly at the half mark. Recreation and parks, pretty much at the same half mark, and we have also services recorded on the general fund, or general fund-only services. Capital outlays, we have budgeted 949,000, we at the half mark to be expensed. So, the change in the position of fund balance is 3.6 on the positive. If we take our contributed revenue of a grant, ARPA grant of 2 points, that's the amount that you see on the very bottom, 2,287,236 dollars. So, the change of an acquisition for six months for general fund is a positive of 1.14 million dollars. The expenditures by percent, what are expenses, where the money's going in the general fund? The biggest one is the public safety of 32%. General government, 27%, public works at 15, planning and community development at 6. Also, we have recreation and parks, that service, and capital outlets at 15%. Those amounts broken bottom said, as we have budgeted on fiscal 22. At the very end, we always see in our financial statements is the breakdown for the fund balance, and as promised, I would be reporting on those balances at every presentation. So, we have non-spendable amount of 1.6 million, those amounts reduced from fiscal 21, due from other funds, specifically is the Stonewater and the Sewer Fund. Restricted is our slots revenues coming from the impact grant. This amount varies monthly because we record it as we receive. The balance as of December is 26,000. Committed is impact fees, we have 900, $1,509 in the assigned account in the reserve. Then we have assigned, consists of insurance and community center, and there's a small amount for police forfeited funds included in that amount as well, of 907,000, $192. So, that leaves was with unassigned balance of 1,399,766. Total at end of December of 2021 calendar for fiscal 22 is 4,800,000 dollars. You have seen that slide previously with the description of what each fund balance means and consists of. Non-spendable is basically is due to, from our other enterprise funds. Restricted is for the purposes because of the other external providers. Committed is our internal commitments and spent by a specific purpose. Assigned is internal commitment, can be unassigned by Mayor and Council, and earmarked for specific purposes. Unassigned is what's available for any purpose at the end of the month, year, or half year, and those amounts recorded in the general fund. Our updated chronograph for comparison for the past seven years, starting with 2015, going into fiscal 2021, as we close our year, that's the last bar graph, and I am very pleased to see that our middle line is growing to be in a healthy side, because unassigned balance at 2.9 million dollars. Pretty much the same, just in words, non-spendable 1.6, restricted, which is slots revenues, 26,000, committed 900, assigned 900, unassigned 1.4 million. Total fund balance for fiscal 21 as of December, I'm sorry, it should say 22, as of December 20, this 31st, 2021 calendar year is 4.8 million dollars.
Natalie, I think, looking at this, if we look at Slide 9, Slide 7, and Slide 10, I think we may need to update that, because at the end of all of the financial statements, the unassigned fund balance was 2.9 million, and on Slide 7, we're showing a fund balance of 1.3, and then on Slide 10, we're showing a fund balance of 1.3.
Slide 7 is six months, ended December 31st.
Okay.
This slide represents fiscal year's total for fiscal 21. And this slide represents six months, just in the words. The only thing on the bottom I have not changed, it should say fiscal year 2022, I apologize. The amounts are stated correctly. Capital projects completed for six months for general fund, building grounds, we have the planning department roof completed, with the amount of $9,000. Town hall windows have been updated, and a new blind's been installed, but the charge is broken in two quarters, so the total amount will be shown in the later days. As of December, 22,000 been recorded as expenditure. Also, a purchase of a Flower Street land for 42,000. In police department, we have two new Chevrolet Pajos for the amount of 80,000, and updated Pacers for 20,000. In streets of public works, we have brand-new Algen Street Swiffer, 249,000, and Power Washer 6,500. In parks, we have installed pavilion roofs in those parks, in the giving, and Henry's at 12,945, nine, seven, I'm sorry, 12,745. That's pretty much concludes of the general fund. If you have any questions, if you want me to stop for a minute on the general fund, if not, I can move electric. Electric is our enterprise fund, operates on charges for services, which is sale of electricity, which we purchase and resell at cost. The six months represent 2.2 million, 2.1 million collected revenues, reported as revenues. 5.3 is budgeted for the full year, so we have a difference of 3.2 so far, and it's 60% to be collected. Operating expenses, we have purchase hour, 45% to be remained, personnel expenses at 47%, supplies and operating expenses 67, professional services 57%, contracted services, we have a bigger amount of 80%, insurance left 10, repairs and maintenance at 71%. General overhead is reimbursement to the general fund, that services, and capital outlays. Overall, looking at six months' performance, it is a loss of 348,990 dollars.
Natalie, what's the big difference in the contracted services between the two years?
The difference for contracted services between the two years, fiscal 21, we had, I believe, the engine generator upgrade, and we were utilizing some contractual services at the higher miles, when we installed the new engines. Capital projects completed, power plant building roof, substation reclosures, and accent lights through the town of 11,000. And that's not the best picture, but I did. Water fund is next. Budgeted 937,000, we are 585 in the revenues. There is a special connection fees, which are performing great in collections, we're way above that. The water services or water sales, it's at the mark of 54%, which completes pretty good in the six months' mark. Operating expenses, budgeted at 937, expenses actual at 476, 50% remaining, which is pretty much on the path where we want to see. As of six months' performance, we have a profitable amount of 109, which I'm glad to see that in comparison with fiscal 21. Sewer fund, budgeted 2.5, revenues collected 1.9, and we have a big jump in revenues for special connection, and also for the hole fees, which Jamie is very proud of, and we can utilize that for a capital project that is ongoing right now in the sewer fund. For the operating expenses, everything pretty much on the marker where it's supposed to be, the total is 55% remaining, and the sewer is operating on the profit at 933,000 as of six months' performance. Capital projects completed for water and sewer, we have underwater, we have Franklin Avenue well, number two rehab, it's ongoing project, Harrison Avenue water valves, and Branch Street well, number three, we have, is ongoing project as well. Sewer fund, ongoing project for 346 East Lift Station, and treatment plan have applied for water and HR system. Stonewater fund, our little baby fund. Revenues, service for, service charges, which is the Stonewater fees, at 57% to be remained to be collected, which is a normal pass, so that expenses pretty much in line. We have a contribution from ARPA mining for the capital project of 110, so if we take that out of the consideration as the contributed revenue and the expense in the same time, the Stonewater fund performing at the profit of $8,300, which is good.
Natalie, what was the capital?
There's improvement of wetland on Washington Street. That concludes my financial highlights. If you want me to go back to any of the slides, please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for our Finance Director?
This is great.
Thank you again.
I'm glad you liked it.
Agenda Item Number 5A is the first reading of Ordinance 2022-01, which is establishing a crematorium as a conditional use in the M1A industrial zoning district. And just so everybody's aware, the public hearing will be held on 3/14/2022, and Dave Inglehart's running point.
Let's let, have attorney go. Maybe actually read.
That's no problem at all. What this does is the tax amendment, we're amending Section 108-5, which is a definition section to our zoning code, to include a crem-, and you'll see that on page three. You can see the paragraph in all caps near the end of page three. We're including a definition of crematorium means a building or facility containing furnaces cremating dead human bodies. That's the only amendment to Section 108-5, then there's also an amendment to 108-557, which concerns conditional uses that are permitted in the M1A zoning district, subject to approval by our Board of Appeals. And if you will look on page 10, at the bottom, that includes a conditional use in the M1A of a crematorium as defined in Section 108-5. And that's our first reading.
Thank you.
Oh, you're allowed to ask questions, right?
Yeah, of course.
So, forgive me, what would be, what would be a conditional use of the same general character?
I don't know. I don't know.
So, what would be?
I really don't understand the question.
What would be a conditional use of a crematorium? Am I understanding that correctly?
No.
No. When you, when you want a conditional use, you go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, because the use is not a principally permitted use. When you go to the first section of the M1A, it'll say manufacturing plants, lumber yards, concrete yards, it won't list a crematorium. And then, it'll say conditional uses per these sections, with Board of Zoning Appeals granting of a conditional use. So, another. So, in other words, if we were to have more than one crematorium, it would have to be in an industrial district, and it would have to be given a conditional use by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Does it make every application to open a crematorium automatic? You need to get Board of Zoning Appeals permission?
Thank you.
It's not a principally permitted use, like, I don't have a great comparison, I guess crematorium throws it off a little bit, but say in the B2, the business district, it calls for a lot of retail uses, but one that is not permitted is a lumber yard, because it's more of a bulk type of delivery and noise system. So that's first permitted in a higher district in industrial or B3, not B2. So if you wanted to, you'd get that done in B2, you'd have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and ask for a special exception or a conditional use.
I mean, this is the first reading, so if you want some clarity on--
I think I'm gonna email you some other questions.
There's always the option for that.
That's fine, thank you.
Any other questions for Dave? All right, thank you. Let's move on to the first reading of ordinance 2022-02, establishing regulations governing short-term rentals. The public hearing for that will be held on March 28, 2022, and Dave Engelhardt's running point on this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and the public. We've talked about this before, ordinance 2022-02 is in ordinance of Mayor Council, the town of Berlin, Maryland, a Maryland municipal corporation, establishing regulations governing short-term rentals of dwellings located within the town of Berlin. Now, do you want me to read the whole thing, or?
I don't think so.
I think, I think the way I made some notes on it myself, we've had some different versions of this, we've simplified it quite a bit. The mayor, Mr. Fleetwood and myself worked on this, Mr. Gaskell more recently. You'll notice one of the changes from the last time we looked at a draft was item C on the first page, eligible zone. And we've pretty much included all of the R1, the R2, the R3, R4, all the residence districts, and the B1, B2, and B3 districts. In those business districts, it is possible to have dwelling units on the upper floors, not on the main floors. In other words, an apartment above a store on Main Street, just like we traditionally had, so they could also have short-term rentals in those apartment units. We, as far as in item D, under license, the requirements, the initial application fee would be in the amount of 350, and then an annual license to renew it each year would be 125.
How about explaining for everyone the logic behind those two numbers?
Well, first, first, the application fee has to provide some, well, quite a bit of inspection, kind of, we have to inspect the property. We will pay our third-party inspection agency, middle department inspection agency, to inspect them for fire safety, for egress, for, you know, quality of life issue, no plumbing issues, no electrical issues, in other words, up to current code. So there's quite a bit of legwork for Carolyn Duffy and I to do in our office, plus that and coordination with the Fire Marshal's office also, because we have to get them involved to inspect the properties also. It's all really for code safety and fire safety. And then proper, you know, even exterior, proper parking area, because we mentioned parking later in the ordinance, and providing the signage, you know, it'll be a placard for inside and out, for, you know, identifying the license number and the address, and the-- So it's basically all our initial legwork, our paperwork, our inspections are the other major thing. We have to pay someone to do those for us, so that's what it's gonna be.
Dave?
Yeah?
Does the Fire Marshal's office charge for them to come to inspect?
Yes, independent of us, just like they do on a building.
So they charge the property? Oh, no. They charge us?
Yes.
Yes, they charge us?
Yes, they're gonna charge the property. They do, when you, just like when you come for a permit to build a new house, they review the plans for the sprinklers and such. That doesn't come out of the Berlin permit fees, that's charged separately by the Fire Marshal to the applicant.
Do you know what their fee is?
They usually, whatever our permit fee is, they piggyback on, they charge the same. I haven't really talked about fees with them.
Yeah, that's, just asking. Thank you.
So that makes, I don't know, that could change a little bit, but as far as the Fire Marshal. Then, on the second page, kind of in the top paragraph, we nailed down a little bit more on the contact, built down a little more on the contact information. We ask for responsible agents who are available for contact 24 hours a day and seven days a week. A responsible agent must be capable of responding to the property 24 hours, seven days a week, and be located within a 30-mile radius of town Berlin's incorporated limits. So we, and we made it so that they, they're responsible by giving us that accurate contact information, and we have it on file, and we will also have the rental license posted in and out near the entrance, near the front entrance to the, to the property. And further down on that second page, parking, we also said, one additional off-street parking space for each bedroom rented shall be required in addition to the parking required in the zoning district where the structure is located. So typically, with a, with a single-family dwelling, you're required to have two parking spaces, so for each bedroom that you want to rent, if it's owner occupied, you'd still need more parking spaces for each bedroom. Otherwise, it would go with the amount of bedrooms. So if you had a four-bedroom house, you need four parking spaces. If you're only renting one, then you, then you only need one additional parking space above the required two. So that's gonna vary.
Does that include stack parking, or is it separate?
It's gotta be off-street parking.
No, I know, but if the driveway is just a lengthy driveway, can the car stack and--
Tandem, tandem parking.
It can be done that way, sure.
Okay.
I mean, I hadn't, we hadn't determined that it couldn't be done that way.
I'm not saying it shouldn't, I'm just asking the question.
I tell you truth, you know, we hadn't thought of that, you know, you need to be off the street is what we were worried about. You know, whether they have to back out so the next one can go get the Chinese food, I don't know, you know?
Well, imagine it, because it comes up a lot in Ocean City, about stack parking.
Yeah, and they allow it, right? Because they have to.
Right.
And I think on some streets here, we'd have the same situation, not everyone, but, and I think that's gonna be, each location, we're gonna have to look at and say, I don't think you really have three parking spaces here, and how are we gonna accomplish that? You know, can they, can they get rid of that hydrangea bush and make that a parking space? We're gonna have to look at that, depending on the house, so.
And that would turn up under the inspection.
Yeah, yeah. So those are really the only items that were not really accomplished in the last draft, and so I think that's, that's kind of realigned down a little bit, we shortened it up a little bit, and I think it's a little clearer than it was in the previous drafts.
I would touch on the last page also, which is the violation side, if you don't mind, just so everybody's aware of that.
Yeah, but, well, we, there's a section here under last page, under E violations, renting without a license is a recurring, a reoccurring fine of $600 for each 30-day period of operations. And then, like the rest of our code, other violations are civil violations, first one being $100, and repeat or continuing will result in a $200 fine, and may result in a revocation or a short-term rental license for the remainder of the licensing period.
Thank you, Dave.
If I may as well, Mayor, I'd like for Natalie to chime in. I hate to put you on the spot, but on page two, first paragraph, last sentence, short-term rental units are subject to the state of Maryland lodging taxes, as administered by the Worcester County Maryland Treasurer's Office. Can you shed a little bit of light on that?
The owner would be responsible filling out, I believe it's monthly, reports and sending it to the state of Maryland to pay for the room tax, and then the state of Maryland would distribute the percent back to town Berlin, we do not calculate that nor collect that on our behalf.
Thank you. All right, any questions for Dave, or any of us?
Yeah, I had one, maybe one or two questions. So I looked up today, did a search, Airbnb, and I saw that there was 26 properties within immediate vicinity of town. That's, that's more than there was last year, but, okay, 26 properties. Several of these sites, under the listing of additional amenities, said 28-plus days, long-term availability. And here's how it's stated, long-term stay allowed, allowed to stay for 28 or more days. Now, of course, this ordinance prohibits that, so who's gonna regulate that? I mean, that was on, that statement was on multiple, multiple sites. And I know it's not you, Dave, because you're, you don't have--
No, like we've said from the beginning, when we first started discussing this, this is, for the most part, voluntary on the owner's part.
Right.
And the second part on the enforcement end is complaint-driven. So I would, I would say on something longer than 28 days, if it got into several months that someone was staying, our current rental license would cover that. You can rent your house, like you want to go to Europe for six months, you can rent your house with a rental license for six months.
So technically, they would have to have two licenses.
Yeah, they'd have our standard rental license plus the short-term rental license.
But realistically, the town may never know if that happens.
Realistically, that's true. If they were a quiet enough neighbor, right, and, I mean, and you know how these days people don't know their neighbor, because, you know, they're all inside with COVID on the computer? They wouldn't know that they didn't buy the house, maybe, or didn't have a long-term lease. So, yeah, I would have to say, and I certainly am not gonna snoop in backyards at 12 o'clock on a Saturday. So, yeah, I, like I said, purely voluntary, and it's the same in other communities, same in Worcester County with their rental licenses, it's voluntary basis, they don't have a lot of staff to go snoop out the enforcement violations, they rely on the public, or-- I have gotten myself emails and phone calls for Airbnb rentals, I'm not picking on Airbnb, that, that brand, that title, but for code violations of properties in the area, and I've had to tell the people, they're not in the limits of Berlin, but here's who to call. And then, within the last year, I've had four or five of them. One lady was worried about the balusters on the rental house that they were on short-term rental on over in West Ocean City, I think it was, because her children could fall through there, and there's a code for that that says they gotta be four inches apart, your balusters on your baluster, so that you, the kids, the idea of four inches apart is a baby's head can't fit through there, and they can't go fall to the second, from the second to the first floor. And I sympathize with her, but I said, here's who you have to call. And several like that, other ones, no working, they're calling me because there were no working fire alarms. You know, they knew that the lights were not, you know, on the fire alarms, so.
Well, perhaps on the application, there could be a statement or a box to check, if your intent is to rent longer than 28 days, you will need to purchase a long-term rental fee. But they're aware of it, and you know they're aware of it, so.
And I will say, we've talked about it all throughout my time here, and we haven't addressed it, and I know you and I have talked about it, and with the town administrator, certain fees we have are pretty long in the tooth, right? And the annual rental license, regardless if it's a single-family home or an apartment, is $10, you know? That doesn't cover Rondell preparing it, a form from us, an envelope from us, and mailing it out to the applicant, it just doesn't anymore. So that's something we ought to look into.
That was my next question.
We ought to look into.
I was gonna bring up the annual renewal fee, and state to the council that it just seems very low, $125 is very low.
What I will say is that that was done in conjunction with looking at some of the peers in the area, and we were a little on the higher side. I think the lower end was like 110, and 125 put us in the, on the higher side. It's open for interpretation.
I would still say we should make it 250, or--
Well, we're gonna have a public hearing, and you can offer an amendment at that.
What's that?
You can offer your, any amendments to this at the--
Not this one.
Yeah, this is the first reading.
The last thing I want to bring up was, in the original ordinance that we reviewed to come up with this ordinance, there was section, or language in there, making R1 and R2, they must be owner-occupied. That was renewed. So, can we talk about that? Why that was removed, and is that something we want to retain?
Well, it was because of the public reaction to that, where we had put in there that you had to be the permanent residence for your State Department of Assessment and Taxation classification, and there were people here who had said that if they did that, they couldn't afford to have that, the home in Berlin, and you use it part of the time, and the short-term rentals actually gave them the ability to own a home in Berlin that they could use, even though they lived elsewhere.
So Dave, I have a problem with that one myself, because the folks that were here were the folks that said what they said, but you, I know that at the same time, we received emails to, what's the email address?
In Boa, Berlin.
Stating the flip, so where's the balance? I'm--
And that's not all on Dave either.
No, no, no.
It wasn't my fault.
I'm not saying it's, I'm not saying this, I'm just asking the question.
I was all for that.
I'm just saying that it's not all on Dave. So what happened was, following those discussions, we worked through this to try and incorporate ideas and general themes from the dialogue. I think the one thing that was overlooked was possibly the parking side. I think we did have some conversations about that, but we never amended this particular one.
So let's go back to eligible zoning, because, I mean, and I hear what you're saying there, I hear you, but I don't want to lose this point, because it's getting late and it's gonna get lost in my head if I don't state this real quick. But with that being said, I guess my question to you is, the validity of having the emails, if we're gonna take into consideration just those that are present?
Right, so that was to my point, that the ordinance was amended to reflect some of the discussion items. The council, it appeared during that dialogue was divided, and some were for allowing people to own or not own and still have a short-term rental, whereas some felt that that was a necessity. So the ordinance is proposed as it is, but like the town attorney mentioned, it is open for amendment before adoption, and it doesn't even have to be adopted, the council could choose not to.
No, I hear, I hear what you're saying, but I'm looking for clarity, because, and this is not to get this going all night long again, but I'm looking for clarity here, because the statement was, we went on, and I'm not, Dave, don't take this personal, we went based upon those folks that were present, right? So when we do this again, you said it's a public forum, correct? And are we taking into consideration the people that are present, as well as those that are emailing?
That's correct.
Okay, I want to make sure that both are equally accounted equal.
But it's not just, it's not just that either. So I think that part of the work that we do is measuring, like doing research, right, on things that may work in other areas, and then also gauging that with the people we engage with every day, right? So when we're in the supermarket, when we're out walking, what do people say to us, right, as representatives? And then it's also weighing what's said during the public hearing, during emails and things of that nature that come in, but I don't think any particular one makes up the whole of the decision.
No, I hear what you're saying, I'm, I'm hearing you, but I mean, that's not, that's not going along with what we stated during that last meeting. I'm hearing exactly what you're saying, but that goes against everything. So, I mean, we need to, if, if this is what we're going to do, there needs to be a clear and concise way that this is gonna happen, because you can't take one measure, and I hear what you're saying about the grocery store visits, but at the end of the day, I don't agree with this, with the way that this stands, and the possible way that this will look on a permanent juncture or document because of the way that this was handled.
And, and that's all completely understandable, and--
So how do we move forward?
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that one has to be-- Well, that's what I'm saying, is that what has to be done is what the town attorney said, is during...
We're going to have a public hearing and after the public hearing, you can propose amendments to this. And if you're not satisfied, you can vote against it.
Correct.
Right. Just making sure that it's clear because I know, and I, again, here we go, people are already saying, but I meant, but I did this, but I did what you told me to do. I sent an email, I did this, I did that, I did what I was told to do. And it doesn't seem as though what I've stated is being thought about. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone that's listening understood the process.
Any other comments from the council? All right, thank you. The public hearing for that, just so that everybody that is watching at home or anybody that we do engage with is, uh, on March 28th. So not this next meeting, but the subsequent meeting. Let's move on to agenda item number six, which is Resolution 2022-03, establishing an abatement fund. The town attorney, David Gasswell, is going to run the point on that.
I'm, I'm going to read this because it's really self-explanatory, I think, of the body of this. So this is Resolution number 22, 2022-03, a resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Berlin, Maryland, establishing an abatement fund. Whereas the mayor and council of the town of Berlin have engaged in litigation with certain manufacturers, distributors, and dispensers of harmful opioids. And whereas a national settlement agreement has been entered into between Johnson &amp; Johnson, AmerisourceBergen, Cardinal Health, and McKesson, in which the state of Maryland and the mayor and council are participants. And whereas the mayor and council and the state of Maryland have entered into a state subdivision agreement on proceeds relating to the settlement of opioids litigation. And whereas the state subdivision agreement requires the mayor and council to establish a local abatement fund consistent with state law for the purpose of receiving and spending direct payments made to the mayor and council by the settlement administrator. Now therefore witnesses, the mayor and council of the town of Berlin resolves to create a local abatement fund to receive and spend direct payments made by the settlement administrator. And the mayor and council further resolves that the local abatement fund shall be a separate account that shall not be co-mingled with any other town funds. Long and short of it is, we're required to do this to receive any funds from the state because the settlement funds are going to the state, they're going to be distributed by the state department of health. No one knows when that's going to happen or how much it'll be yet, because I know that's a question that probably Jack might be ready to ask me, but nobody knows yet. But we are required by March the 22nd to pass this resolution and establish that fund.
And clarity on that as well, Natalie, Dave and I had a conversation today. It's, it's titled an abatement fund, but it will be a, an abatement account, it's a separate account, a bucket that will hold that money when, when it is distributed.
So, um...
Well, and, and the, let me interrupt you. And the reason for that is that apparently the way this settlement is set up, um, I don't even know what the parameters are and what we're going to be able to spend the money on. It, it's mostly going to be for prevention and treatment issues. But the state legislature is in the process of passing a bill this session that will allow us to do this because apparently it can't right now, um, or we couldn't right now. But we need to keep, have a separate bank account because it's going to be audited where that money goes to make sure that we're ultimately spending it on things that we're allowed to spend it on. So that's why it, it has to be separate. And I am told that there, in this settlement agreement, there are clawback provisions, which means that these defendants who are funding this, if our money is not spent, the money goes back to the defendants, these opioid companies. They get, they get their money back if it's not spent. That's what I'm told.
Oh, wow.
Well...
We'll pay good attention to Berlin to make sure that doesn't happen.
So Dave, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. This, this money will be coming from the state, from the Maryland Department of Health?
They are, I, I am told again that the Department of Health will be administering the settlement funds received for the opioid litigation and sending it to municipalities and counties around the state.
Okay. Uh, I think I will have to recuse myself from this vote, being a state employee of the Department of Health.
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
You don't have to accuse yourself unless you feel like you can't be fair.
Well, I can be fair, but I don't want any appearance of anything.
Are you getting anything out of that?
The other thing, Dave, if you would, another, it's been a while since we've had the conversation, but the amount of money that we are potentially looking at was...
It's projected to be $95,000.
And, and the dispersment period...
Is 18 years.
That is for 18 years. To Councilmember Wors.
I mean, is there a, do, as, do you see legal issue with this?
I do not.
No.
No, what do you want?
But if you feel, if you feel that you want to abstain, that's understandable. I think we have enough votes to take care of it.
Well, as long as the other three votes...
Right.
We have to have free votes.
But as long as we have...
Free same votes.
Right, free same votes.
So with that being said, we do need action on Resolution number 2022-03.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion by Councilmember Nerton.
Second?
I have a second by Councilmember Fornell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I am going to abstain.
All abstaining. So the, uh, the vote for Resolution number 2022-03 is three, uh, in favor, none opposed, and one, uh, abstention, which is Councilmember Wors. Thank you.
Jeff, I don't want to jump in, but I'm going to need a signed copy of that so I can shoot it up to the Attorney General's office.
Thank you.
Okay.
Five dollars.
You need it by March because Dean...
By March 22nd, yeah.
So wouldn't the, would be three, one, one absent?
Yeah.
Yes, we have a...
Give her the summary.
We do have a, a section in here where it says X amount abstaining, X amount absent. So I mean, it's all, we cover all bases in here, so.
Thank you. Not many abstentions we have to summarize, but, um, and, uh, so agenda item number seven is the mayor's recommendation to transfer 1.9, $1,941,969 to reserves. So in the packet for agenda item number seven, you have a copy of a letter to the council along with the past Resolution 2021-02, which this body approved unanimously, uh, creating these separate funds. Uh, in our most recent audit, it was identified that we had, uh, $2,941,969 in our unassigned fund balance. Uh, my recommendation is that we begin doing the work that we already started, which is we establish the funds. Now they have a current balance of zero. I think that we need to move, uh, some of the money that's in the unassigned fund balance over into some of these categories that we've already identified as a priority. Just to summarize, the policy establishes that the disaster recovery fund should be $250,000. My recommendation is that we fund that fully at 100%. The debt reduction says equal to one year of debt service. So for FY '23, the debt service, uh, is projected to be $294,845. Uh, my recommendation is to fund that at $290,000, which mean is, uh, 98.37% of the recommended amount. And the reason for that is, is that by FY '24, that debt service will be hopefully, as long as we don't take on any additional debt, uh, below $290,000, which will put us greater than $100,000 in that recommended amount. Or greater than 100% in the recommended amount. The stabilization, uh, fund is, uh, target balance of 20% of the current fiscal year operating budget. I will note that the finance director did catch an error here. Uh, FY '22's, uh, operating budget was lower than 1.3 million. Do you have that exact figure for us, Natalie?
I have $1,115,000, looking around at 2.2 or 1.1.
So, uh, the error here is that I included capital in that calculation. I excluded debt service, but I didn't exclude capital. Uh, so the recommended amount is 20%. So the 1.2 million rounded up, uh, as the finance director just quoted, uh, would mean that the $1.3 million recommended transfer would actually be greater than the 99.58%. My recommendation is still to transfer that amount over to have it in that stabilization fund. Capital, the target fund balance as denoted by the policy is $100,000. You'll notice that the recommended transfer is $101,969 or 101%. The total recommended transfer is $1,941,969. Is there any questions?
Zach, I have a question. Um, in your letter, you say, in the statement, the town works to maintain an unassigned fund balance of approximately $1 million. Where did that $1 million number come from? Is that from the previous council?
No, so that number came from when we were working through at the staff level, the creation of Resolution 2021-02, we identified that the town needed to maintain an unassigned fund balance. That number was not targeted in the policy. Uh, rather, the internal discussion at the time was to maintain about a million dollars. And what that fund does is that each year we set a budget, right? Uh, projected revenues, projected expenditures. Some years you'll notice that, uh, that does not always hold true to form and there are some, uh, funds that may run in the negative. One culprit has been, sorry Jamie, the sewer fund with the debt service.
Mayor, sorry, sewer fund is not applicable to this discussion at all.
Yeah, this is general...
However, however, if the fund closes in the red, where does the money come from?
It's for when the close the fund, but unassigned balance has nothing to do with that.
So if the budgeted amount comes in less than what we projected or an expenditure comes in over what we projected, that money is pulled from an unassigned fund balance.
So there is merit in saying that fund should be 1.5 million or...
If I may make a recommendation, I, my recommendation to this body is to strike that, uh, that, that figure, that hun- that $1 million to the unassigned fund balance. That would just strike it.
See, there, this letter is meant to guide the council in the logic used for the transfers.
Information, sure.
Correct. So what you will notice is that the letter defines a, so the exact wording is the town works to maintain an unassigned fund balance of approximately $1 million each fiscal year, which is not incorrect. However, um, we have not defined what that balance should be, uh, in the policy intentionally because that may change with time. So what you may see is that in a given year, uh, that amount may be $900,000. In some instances, it's been $16,000. If that were to occur, that should be a flag for all of us, right? So we should, alarm bells should start to go off and say, what's causing this to happen? So I think that it's good, uh, financial stewardship for the council to use a figure of a million dollars if that needs to be adjusted. We have had that discussion internally. But the only figure that we have discussed so far has been a million dollars.
So it's kind of like a trigger for action?
Uh, it's more or less like a, if you're doing household finance, right? You may have like an operating account where you pay your bills out of and you may choose to have a, a buffer, right? There's like no definitive amount. Uh, that's usually placed on the logic, uh, within whoever's running the, the finance, right? So what we're saying is that as a good financial planning tool, we've identified about a million dollars in that fund should be reasonable. Some years you may see that get to 1.3, 1.4. If it gets to 2.94 million, uh, we're probably going to be coming back up with another request to do something else with that money because it's not just designed to hold...
Yeah, I just want to make sure that 1 million is a healthy number that, uh, were a, a policy we should set down the road.
I don't think it should be defined in policy. I think it needs to be a benchmark that the council needs to pay attention to, most certainly. But I think that we've also discussed this figure, right? And my request to the town administrator and finance director is that if that needs to change at a given time, we need to have that conversation. But right now, the, the conversation is that it should be at a million dollars.
May I suggest, so the benchmark is set up as the GPO advisable benchmark for three months of operating expenses as budgeted. So if we look at the current budget that we have fiscal '22, that amount will come to about 1.5 million dollars. So the million is for discussional purposes only, but if you would like to set up that amount, I then suggest to amend the policy, reserve policy for general fund and insert a specific line item for unassigned balance and the benchmark and the amount, but not the amount exactly, but the 90 days, three months of operating, operational expenses. So in the letter here, we're not setting up that benchmark. We're discussing this replenishment of disaster debt and the stabilization right now. But the target should be minimum 90 days of operational expenses as budgeted.
So if...
It could be 1.5, it could be two, it depends our, on the amount of our budget per fiscal year.
I don't think that this number needs to be set on a whim. And in the discussions that we had surrounding the, uh, reserve policy, the number that came up in that discussion was a million dollars. If it needs to be adjusted in a given year, I think there's a process for that. But I think that for the basis of this financial planning, it's, it's sound reasoning to keep a million dollars in our unassigned fund balance and to fill these buckets with the recommended rates.
I'm, I'm fine with this now, but maybe we can talk about...
Most definitely.
What, uh, setting that benchmark is huge.
I agree.
So the, would these funds be assigned funds?
So these funds are defined within the resolution as, Natalie? Do you remember if they were assigned? I think they require action.
They should be assigned...
Correct.
For our general fund reserve policy.
Which requires action.
We have committed fund balance as a disaster recovery. Debt service assigned would be stabilization and capital reserve. They're very close in the purpose, assigned and committed. Basically, it's mayor and council determining earmark committed for a specific purpose.
Thanks. And just to clarify, it would take council action to remove money from those funds? The only caveat is the disaster amount, which allows for the town administrator to move up to that amount, the full balance of that amount, or $250,000.
So the, the, just to clarify for everyone that is watching and listening, so the 1.9, that you're requesting to transfer is from the, the healthy, the health of the town finances?
Yes, so to put this plainly, uh, this is money that, um, is in excess of our operations, capital, and debt service.
Good year.
Good year. So this does not include the, the, this doesn't include the ARPA?
This is not ARPA money at all.
Okay, just want to make sure that's clear. And then the other thing, um, when we, uh, when we, when we did the, if I remember correctly, when we approved the policy, um, you know, it was great to get to these goals and this is a very thought-out transfer plan here you have, but would it behoove us to maybe try to eliminate some of this debt with the health that we have? I understand that this is a debt reduction, uh, bucket, if you will, but is there, in the budget discussions you've had, and I wasn't able to attend this with the department heads, is there any mechanism for using some of the reserve that you're suggesting transfer to knock out some debt?
There is no discussion at this time about paying down, uh, any debt service outside of the scheduled amounts already defined. This is designed to help, uh, I think Jay used the word good year, this is designed for the bad year. So we're, we're designing this so that if things dried up and there was a huge shift in the economics of the town as it, right? So we're, it, we're not protected, protected. It gives us a chance to adjust course, which is necessary. Uh, it gives us a year of debt service to be able to cover those obligations while we figure out what the plan is. It's designed to aid in the better financial planning and it's designed to help strengthen the town's borrowing position.
So did that service here as a reserve set out used to prevent an ability not to pay?
Getting behind the money.
If something to happen? And stabilization bucket, as we call them buckets, that amount will vary each year. It's 20% of operating budget. So that amount should be adjusted from fiscal year to fiscal year.
And we are seeking action to transfer these, uh, amounts. And we are seeking action to transfer these amounts. And it can be done, Dave, it can be done in one motion, can it?
Yes.
And this doesn't affect, just one more question, I apologize. This doesn't affect the, the capital plan that was presented because that's all our-
Yep, it does not affect any of like our capital planning. This is all merely taking money that's sitting in one, as people say, bucket, right?
Right, we probably should think of a better word.
And right now there are very limited controls around that, right? So unassigned has very limited control. What, unassigned has very limited controls around it, right? Whereas, and that's spelled out here, so if you look at the bottom of the purposes, the category of purpose of each fund balance, right, in the policy, as you step up, it gets additional restrictions associated with it. So in the unassigned, it defines what that looks like. In assigned, it requires council action to move that money generally. So it's adding an additional layer of protection to those funds.
I mean, I get, I just want to make sure that everybody's-
It's a good question.
So with the stabilization, the 99.58 was really like more like a 1.2 million, right? Or 1.1?
Well, so that was an error in my math, right? So I made an error and calculated capital-
Right.
-when I should have omitted capital. It should be, according to the policy, a 20% transfer would be about 1.2 million dollars. By putting 1.3 in there in your stabilization, you're not going to hurt yourself, you're only going to strengthen that stabilization fund.
I think it's great.
Well, I told you it should be happening.
I'm there.
You've been asking about these fund balances.
Believe me, I'd take a seat coming around the corner.
So we make the motion.
I'll make a motion, I believe you, please don't steal that from me.
I also have a motion now. Make the motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
I have a second, my councilmember Oris, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you all. The vote is unanimous and I think this is a very big step for Berlin.
Yeah, I mean, this was quick. I mean, this happened, it was a thought, a minute ago, now it's-
A good year.
All right, so up next is agenda item number eight, which is the town administrator's report.
Mayor, council, I just want everyone to know that tomorrow the mayor, Ivy, Dave Engard, Chief Downing, Natalie, Jimmy Charles, and I are headed to Snow Hill with the county commissioners, I believe, who are scheduled to be all at 10:30-ish.
That's, yeah, they say 10:30, but, and we've invited the council as well, so anybody that can attend, anybody that can attend?
I'd like to hear it.
I'd like to drive the streets we work out there.
Better leave now.
But the three, the three bullets that the mayor's asked for, just for a rehash, public safety, and that is a $465,000 request, and that's for EMS, fire, and police. Rails to trails last year, the commissioners helped fund upfront money, if you will. This year we're asking for $73,796. And then the third bullet that the mayor's requesting assistance with would be a Flower Street roundabout. And the projected development phase of this is about $244,000, and the mayor's requesting half of that. The RFE for meter procurement is out, due back, bids are due back, I believe, on March 22nd.
Correct.
And I do want to steal Jamie real quick and have Jamie just real quick to tell my mind, the lead-in copper, so if you would, please share a little bit on that.
Yes, the new lead-in copper will begin in the second, October 16th of 2024. There's a, I'm still learning a lot. I have a meeting with a guy tomorrow about it, that's like, kind of like a support group. And, but my understanding is-
I have a copper plate.
Yeah, so I guess it's a, what they're saying is that if you have to verify if it's not had led through it, and you can verify that it's not had led through it, then it's, you're to tail it, but if it's suspected it hadn't led through it, then you have to follow the new rules. So we did find some grant writing, we might need, I wanted to speak to Jeff today about some grant writing opportunities with him and Mary and maybe Chief Downing, the people that helped them, but there is some money, because I pretty much told the guy on the phone that we can't, we can't afford to do all that, because I mean, you're pretty much talking about everything in town. So I do know that it's, there's going to be some action starting in 2024 on that.
Are they going to offer you assistance with that? I mean, because that's major.
To unfund it, mandate.
This is, this is a stem from Front Michigan.
Yes.
Oh, I get it.
Okay.
I mean, I get it, but.
Well, you got it.
Anything else?
Yes, I have, and I also want to publicly thank Blakely Shord, who works downstairs, Natalie and Jimmy, the new blinds that you see. They were fun to work with, all three of those individuals, and the cost on these-
Where's the woman, the cake?
No, we're not showing that. But the cost, the cost was just shy of $2,000 to do 36, 37 windows.
It really did brighten it up, yeah.
And it brightened it up.
And I even think some of these photos are with the lights off and it's still brighter, so it was great.
So my personal thanks to those folks for their assistance, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the town administrator? All right, let's start with departmental reports, and we'll start with Economic and Community Development Director Ivy Wells.
Thank you. I don't have really much of anything tonight. I did want to say that for the billboard on 611, that's been there for more than a decade, the one, as you're heading towards AT, well, two decades, three decades, three decades. It's lasted, it's lasted a long time. That's an SHA billboard, and the only cost we have involved in that is just to maintain it. So we are going to have a new design for that billboard as half the billboard was damaged in the wind and some of the panels fell down, so there will be a new design up on that billboard within the next few months.
And Jimmy, Jimmy and his department have volunteered to do whatever's needed.
They were voluntold. And then also, just so, we have to be there at 10:30 tomorrow, is that correct, Jeff?
We're leaving, we're going to leave here at 9:30.
Our letter said 10:30, that, it said 10:30.
So be at-
We're going to leave here at 9:30.
Right. I'm driving myself, so, okay.
I was about to say, if you're riding with him, just be here at 9:50.
Right, I'm driving myself down, thanks.
That concludes my report. Thank you. Up next, well, any questions for our Economic and Community Development Director? Up next is Planning and Zoning Director Dave Engard.
No, no, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing further to add.
Well, Dave, I do have a confession. I always call you Planning and Zoning Director.
It's Pla, Planning Director.
I know. I will start changing course on that, my apologies. Planning Director Dave Engard.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but.
Does that mean I don't have to do anything about zoning anymore?
I don't know about that, but, doesn't the building say Planning and Zoning?
It's still planning.
It's, all right, so.
Thank you.
Planning Director, my apologies.
Not needed.
Up next is, up next is the Electric Utility Director Tim Moore.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I have a few things to report on. On North Main Street, there was a new commercial built that was built about too long ago and it finally is completed. We had to install a temporary transformer to give them power while it was being built, and then we had to upgrade it to the existing new transformers there now. So that job is completed. William Street and Old Ocean City Boulevard, we had a underground primary issue there. That's where the food line shop center, where we had that outage. We figured out what was going on there, repaired it. And then also Bay Street, the SHA project, we had to remove some down guys for SHA, but they were doing some work there, took care of that. And then 545 Bay Street, that's the townhouse development. It's kind of like across from Bottle Branch Road. Willow Construction is doing some upgrades there to the buildings and renovating, and we had to go in there and do some disconnects and reconnects for the electrical side of it. And then today, we started meter readings, we're going to be in the yards for the next couple of days, reading meters. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Any questions for our Electric Utility Director Tim Moore? All right, up next is our Chief of Police Arnold Down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Which first, your video or your soundbite?
We're going to have some audio and visual displays this evening.
Okay, bear with me because we're going to skip.
You can do that one first.
Okay.
Wish you have one three in front of you.
Okay.
As we always mention, TH here is the Great Customer Service Award. This is Brian Keemeyer, friends at Shell Brothers. Again, as we always mention, TH, Shell Brothers, it's one just company, it's a brand, and when it says Shell Brothers, you know you're getting something good. Whether it's the Shellville or your Shell Brothers home, or they even have a coffee shop down there, brought to you by Shell Brothers in Berlin. They do things right. It's a, it's a privilege to be involved with guys like Shell Brothers.
We didn't meet you, you could have got it.
They do it right. Now, something that, something here, we just picked our Great Customer Service Award.
Yeah, this guy's my servant.
It is. You know this, I do, you know.
I do.
They did better before.
I know very well.
Okay.
I'm great, they're great guys.
Wow. Uh, let's see. What is it? You know what it is?
Oh, I do, I love it, I love this.
Is it a random generated?
It's a random generated.
Someone recommended, we didn't put it in. I would have.
For all, big department.
All right, good morning.
This is Bulldog, we're live on the air, Ocean 98, and we're looking for Officer Bragg.
Sergeant Bragg.
Sergeant Bragg.
What if Bragg got in today, 98th time?
Can you give them a message for us?
Sure.
Okay, so we do this thing here, it's called Great Customer Service, on the radio, and people nominate, they go to our website or study, they nominate people for Great Customer Service, and somebody nominated Officer Bragg, Sergeant Bragg, for Great Customer Service, and we just wanted to acknowledge him, and that's it.
Okay, and-
And that's it.
Did you hear Radio Station?
Ocean 98, you don't know us? That's the rock, come on, we're like Berlin's home radio station.
You guys stop shooting.
Give me the briefing tomorrow morning.
Yes, Bulldog, you are our number one. And Big Al. Again, anytime we get acknowledged by the public, it's very appreciated, and again, I want to go ahead and push Sergeant Bragg out there, and we definitely had opportunity to go ahead and thank him, but we want to definitely let the council and the rest of the staff and the public know that he was acknowledged on Friday by 98.1, and not actually them, but someone actually from the public went ahead and said, they really appreciate his customer service. Again, he's a sergeant, so again, he supervises people, so again, translating that, you know, throughout the department, I'm very proud whenever you have someone step up and say, hey, we really appreciate you, your guy really did a good job, and we believe that his customer service, or whatever it might be, is appreciated in such a way. So again, this is a shout out to Sergeant Merle Bragg, and this definitely, well, again, this definitely appreciated from Bulldog, Big Al, just for, you know, doing those things, and whoever nominated him. So that's the first one of the day.
I think that the black cowboy hat should become standard issue now.
Again, we're not working on that right now. But, but again-
Pretty capital.
We definitely have seen unique individuals in the department, and they bring a lot of experience. You know, we're talking about a professional group, so I'm very proud of every one of them, but today's Merle's day.
And next, for your entertainment, we will have-
The Berlin Police Department is looking for qualified candidates to join our team in the coolest small town in America. For the town rich in history, blue ribbon schools, great healthcare, and a safe community, Berlin was voted the third safest town in Maryland in 2019. Berlin invites you to apply in time for the July 2022 Police Academy. The agency has several specialized positions, including a detective position, K-9 unit, accident reconstruction, and firearm instructors. Start a wonderful career today by applying.
And this is actually being shot out as we speak on the Xfinity platform, so again, if you're talking about the Weather Channel, ESPN, if you have the cable network, it's an opportunity to go ahead and see those commercials. It's done locally. We're definitely out there looking for good women and men to come to our agency, and if you notice, we're actually trying to sell the town also. Again, I think that's the best selling point that we do have. If you go ahead and look at the other agencies that are around us, they're looking for the same people we're looking for. They're putting out bonuses that we can't, they're providing some other things that we don't have, but again, they can't match Berlin and the community support which we have. So again, you didn't see police cars, you didn't see anybody jumping and resting and doing those things. What you heard is really a great place to live and work. So again, that's the first thought. We get to have another one that's coming up, and we're actually having the officers themselves speak. This was all funded with grant money. So it was innovative way to go ahead and push out. We've tried, you know, different ads and newspapers and, you know, on social platforms all by themselves, and we think this is a go ahead and help. We have to go ahead and other thank the production team, Unseen Productions with Dave Messick for putting this together and to giving us thoughts and ideas. If you saw those pictures, they're our pictures. We couldn't have done this without Ivy because any of the video, it came from her, and to go ahead and pull from her expertise to go ahead and get this done, again, you got to love the team when you can go ahead and make a phone call and say, hey, we've never done this kind of stuff, can you help us? And she's done it, working with the county, you know, the town itself. So again, to have someone like that to lean on, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
The Berlin Police.
Right on cue.
So again, like I said, we're going to have a couple officers up there in the next one, and hopefully we'll get applicants for the upcoming academy and get to move forward. So any questions about either one?
Who's the mayor?
I'm not quite sure who they use, but we have the listener like, that's a good voice.
That's the Jimmy Charles radio voice. It could have really been an internal production.
We also want to go ahead and speak to the missing cats that was shot out on social media and various platforms. This actually hit the social media like 10 days ago. We actually had it addressed by the Friday, and now we're actually having a couple other people speak to it. But I've had opportunity to speak to all the people affected in this. Out of all the cats, we believe most of them have been returned. The one that hasn't been returned, we don't believe was trapped. I better back it up because everybody does not know what I'm talking about.
Oh, they know.
I think we're all aware.
One thing we know is Forgotten Cats and Community Cat Coalition, they're both established nonprofits that have a good mission. So again, them taking cats out of the community that actually have not been spayed and neutered, which they think are feral cats, that's a good thing. In this situation, several cats which were pets got caught up in the whole situation. Us as an agency, we reviewed this and we came back with certain statements to everybody who was involved. Number one, if you have a pet, the universal way to go ahead and say, I am a pet, have a collar on. That means dogs, cats, you know, guanas, whatever you got. If you have a collar on it, it goes in and says, thank you, that I am a pet and I'm valued by my owner. If you actually have, you know, your ear crypt, if you have the chip, whatever is noticeable, that will go ahead and tell those people when they come to track, hey, this is a pet and we're not going to take it anywhere, we'll let it go back and hopefully it'll go to its home. People who are missing cats or any other animals, please call us and Animal Control. We know you're going to post it on Facebook with a pretty picture of the cat or the dog or whatever the animal is. Go and do that, but make sure you contact us because we might have the phone call that, hey, someone picked up this dog or cat. With the folks that are taking the cats to another state, we've made an agreement with them, do not remove any animal from the town of Berlin and take them anywhere without contacting us and Animal Control. And they said this is where everybody is located. And again, no animal that they take is ever euthanized at all. They're taken to a state where it's a no kill. Merlin's not that. So, that is one of their missions, to make sure that the cats themselves, animals, but in this situation, cats, are not hurt or harmed. So, that is one reason why one animal that was actually saved, taken, whatever word you want to go ahead and use in this situation, comes all the way back from October, September, and they had the opportunity to go in, link up with that actual pet, and bring it back. So, I think that we have a whole lot of detectives out in our community, and I might hire a couple of them. But I think the communication with everyone was the key, and is the key. We have a lot of things to do, but again, it's important to you, it's important to us, and pets are part of the family, and we have the value of that. And again, help us, help you. Pets should not be roaming freely in such a way that they may go ahead and be hurt or injured. So, try to control your animals best you can, and that's our statement to everyone.
Thank you, Chief.
You're quite welcome.
Any, any questions for the Chief of Police?
I knew we were gonna have any cat questions when I got done.
Well, thank you, you made it very, very clear, and I appreciate that.
It's catastrophic.
You can tell it's getting late. Alright, next department, Dave Gaskell. Up next is our Finance Director Natalie Slud.
We're finishing the budget process. Requests from department heads, we had meetings with each department for General Fund, we also had internal workshops to discuss the requested budgets. I have finance and administration left to go over for the General Fund, and the draft will be complete pretty much after, and then we'll start with the enterprise funds for each individual department's funds that all drafted in Tyler software, I will be sending the reports for your review as they're completed, the requested budget for fiscal 23.
And finance and admin will be, I believe it's Wednesday at 3:00 or 3:30?
Wednesday at 3:30 or 4:30. And we have Councilmember Nichols and, I think that are attending.
Also, Natalie, I believe I need to make the announcement, what, that the budget will be introduced on March 14th, which is our tax, yep, thank you, thank you. Tax rate will be introduced on March 14th during our 7:00 PM regular session. Thank you.
The advertisement.
No, I have gray hair already, don't start me there. Not over this budget, but go ahead.
The advertisement will go in next week, and Friday, newspapers will have it next week and the week after as well.
And that is the tax rate that will be introduced and the constant yield rate, right, with the whole little blur that you normally do?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for the Finance Director? Alright, up next is our Water Resources Director Jamie Lash.
I have nothing, I'm just, I'm tickled, I'm doing pretty good this budget.
Yeah, six months, let's carry that forward. Up next is our Public Works Director Jimmy Charles.
Jimmy Charles.
Give us your best, give us your best voice, come on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Last Tuesday, we had a briefing on the automated truck. After talking with Bob, it'd be a couple days to get it repaired. At that point, our crews all went out on the streets and did the rest of the trash on Tuesday by hand, got it all completed. Meanwhile, we were in contact with Ocean City and Ocean City Public Works, and I want to say a big thank you to them. We were able to rent one of their trucks for two days for Wednesday and Thursday's trash route, which kept our guys off the street, and we were able to complete the trash all last week. The repairs were done to the truck, it's back in running order. We modified the bracket that we had an issue with, so we don't expect to see any problems with that in the near future.
Which, I'm sorry, Jimmy, which truck was this thing?
The 82, the automated truck with the arm. And the second thing I have is the disc golf laid out their pins and their T-boxes, and it's all through the park, and it's in the areas that is all designated. The only one they did change is down here in the very, very bottom one, that comes around, which it actually would have put the pin in the circle roundabout. So they changed it, it's actually up towards where it says park there, the word park, so that pin is now moved up there, so it's actually in a better location. And so the disc golf is ready to go, so if you have some frisbees, and that, off you go.
They've been going to, no problems.
What's that?
They've been already out there.
Oh, yeah.
Been no problems.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for our Public Works Director Jimmy Charles?
Yeah, sorry, Jimmy, did they keep the yellow arrows? Do they still need them?
There is some on the trees, I can, I can, I guess they would need them as a direction of wherever next.
Yeah, if they need them, I mean, I would just.
So, but each of the T-boxes actually do, they have concrete, or little pavers, and they have markers and numbers on, so I don't see any issues with them, but.
And I haven't been there, but do they have the, the signage about, for people walking that they might have?
Like a warning.
Like a warning, like a flying?
Signs, but I'll check tomorrow.
A UFO, sure.
And I'll get back with, I think it was Sean, and we'll talk and see about when they'll have them installed.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jimmy? Alright, up next is our Deputy Town Administrator Mary Bolden.
Good evening, the only thing that really I have is the Parks Commission meets tomorrow evening. At this point, they're mostly planning for spring events, including the Backyard Buffer Tree Giveaway, which is now open and available, there's a form online where folks can reserve tree bundles, and quantities are limited, they tend to go pretty quickly.
I have a question. Are we doing Take Pride in Berlin Week again? Are we restarting that?
Actually, Ivy's gonna deal more with the Take Pride in Berlin part and unconcentrate or just on Clean Up Day.
Okay, is it still gonna be in April?
Well, yeah, it's always around Earth Day.
Okay. Any other questions for our Deputy Town Administrator?
Well, can we ask, are we doing the Week celebration?
Hi, this is the first I'm hearing of that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, whatever Mary needs help with, I'm here to help.
We'll figure it out, but I think this year we need Take Pride in Berlin Week. Personally, we've missed it two weeks, two years with COVID, whatever we have to do, let's, let's take some pride and get people together. Thank you. Up next is our Administrative Manager Kelsey Dunson.
I'll keep it quick. Still hiring for a part-time communications officer, a full-time public works superintendent, and a full-time police officer, so applications are available online.
Full-time police officers?
Officers, sorry, yes, now there's two. So, full-time police officers, and then I know Ivy and Allison are going to be attending a job fair in March, and Allison was nice enough to put together a little flyer for me, she's gonna be putting, pulling it together with all the job postings and sending it over and stuff, so, to have out on display, so I appreciate that. Maryland State Retirement, they are switching over to a new program for ED users, so Jeff and I are both gonna be attending that training on Wednesdays.
So they're finally getting rid of their DOS program?
Not a hundred percent. We'll find out on Wednesday. We use a DOS program.
How many decades, Mary, how many decades?
I can't even like get out of it on sight. So, yeah, it's fun, but, and then also, Jeff and I will both be attending the legit renewal workshop that they're gonna hold in April, so that'll talk about things like coverage, liabilities, rates, COVID, you know, they're gonna have attorneys on site if we have any questions or anything like that, so we're gonna be attending that in April, that's all I've got.
Thank you. The only thing I will say is, I don't know which one of you, but Dean's not here tonight, but thank you for the binders, I think they do make things a little easier.
You're welcome. I had to move mailboxes because they didn't fit, so your mailboxes may have shifted, but they're there.
Just to clarify also on the job fair, I forgot to mention that in my report, just briefly, what we're doing is, is the job fair's going to be at Wester County Library, and due to the limited space, what we've done for specifically the downtown businesses is we put together a general application form, and then they can write whichever business they'd like to apply for, and then we're going to make copies of those, just minimal question applications, name, address, phone number, what are you interested in, how they can contact you, and then we'll distribute those applications to each business that the applicant has applied for, and then we'll have a poster with a list of all the shops in downtown Berlin, which is over 70 downtown Berlin businesses now. So just to clarify that.
And to keep it simple, because Allison was worried about space on flyer, I told her just put together like a QR code, directs them to the town site, and that way, they are interested in a job position with the town, they can just scooch on over to our site, so I think that'll be helpful, thank you.
Quick question. Is there, is there a limit to how many times we can change over the sign that's on Route 611?
We can change out however, I mean, obviously there's a cost involved with that, but you mean, you're talking about the billboard.
Correct.
It's a few thousand dollars, but I mean, we can do whatever we want with it.
Okay.
You know, maybe cost prohibitive to do it too often.
Right. But, I was just wondering, thank you. Any questions for our Administrative Manager Kelsey Dunson? Alright, I think that concludes departmental reports, let's take the Council, Councilmember Purnell.
One thing, there's Insane Homes guys, are they, they're getting ready to start, aren't they, I see a lot of surveying, why, have they paid the impact fees yet, billing permits, or are they coming?
The billing permit was just submitted this week.
There we go.
And there was a check for, for the impact fees, the permit fees, and so far, the 10% for the allocation of the EDUs.
Awesome.
So, but no permit been issued yet, so.
Pretty, pretty much where I'm heading with this is, we had talked before, and when I first got on the council, we put a sidewalk down Broad Street. Man got the prices for it, it was a really good thing, I think having those new homes being built there, and Purnell Crossing has already paid their impact fees before, there should probably be enough money in an impact fee to pay for a sidewalk between Purnell Crossing and the intersection of Cheers. And I'd like, I'd like to see us get an estimate on, because there is gonna be a lot more traffic going up and down there, there is no sidewalk right now, and I'd like to see how much this could cost, and who couldn't do that.
We'll take a look at that for that FY '23 budget, we'll get the numbers up and.
Sooner the better.
But again, state highway.
I understand, so was Broad Street.
Okay, I.
They will welcome us building a sidewalk for them.
State highway did fund a very good portion of Broad Street, so maybe we could talk to them and.
And that entire sidewalk is great.
Maybe we can get up with, I don't need to who we would talk to on that, now.
According to all.
Wherever we gotta do, because that is the only access in and out of that place, and I see people walking there all the time.
And we'll try to add that as a capital item for 23. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Councilmember哪儿?
Nothing to report.
Alright, Councilmember Nichols, or do you want to go last?
I'll go right now.
Okay, go ahead.
First off, fabulous turnout tonight, fabulous for those folks who came out that had things to say, opinions to provide, and questions to ask of the two arfie fellas, great job. Note to everybody out there in Berlin land, what day are we coming back to discuss short-term rentals, March 22nd?
28th.
28th. So, I'm saying this to everybody out there that's listening, I'm not telling them to fill the house, but what I'm saying, don't look at me like that. What I'm saying to you is, if you have a comment, a question or a concern, the best thing for you to do is to make that known, or come right in, because we've got lots of chairs.
There's nothing wrong with a bunch of people.
No.
I'm just looking at you.
Anything else?
No, because I'm done.
You're good. Councilmember Oris?
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Up next, and number 11 is the mayor's comments, I think I covered the introduction, that's everything that was on my list, and thank you again, like Councilmember Nichols said, to everybody that came in this evening, and for the two people that submitted proposals. Comments from the public, anybody?
Just real quick, thanks to.
We know each other, but name and property.
Oh, sorry, Jimmy, one sec, before I jump in, thanks to Chief Downs for tamping down the fires of all that, and giving productive advice to people in regards to those things. Also, talking about the short-term rentals, Ocean City faced this same problem about 10 years ago, where there's more short-term rentals, or more house swaps, or whatever, they actually opened in a new position, and the reason I know this is by Flyboy, for licensing, and what that person did was they were in charge of inspecting these homes, of making sure all the licenses were on there. So it might be something you think about, and I know that we're smaller, but it seems that we are getting more and more of these rentals, and you might even see if you couldn't make this position, like teamed up with, say, Snow Hill or Pocahontas, have them supplement this person, I'm just saying, there might be something there, and you can team up with someone and actually make a physical position, taking some of the burden off of, A, your neighbor reporting on a neighbor, and, and also bringing in more income, they should figure, City figured out they were missing thousands and thousands in revenue.
I'm glad you brought that up. So that person's kind of like the watchdog?
They are the watchdog, they wanted someone with experience with Ocean City, the way it was laid out, with places and properties, with rentals and popular rentals, also the hidden rentals, you know, the ones that are just like, oh, you know, under the table, and their job was literally to track down, like, if you were in a condo and you didn't pay the rental fees, you know, to rent that condo for the license, but you had neighbors saying, oh, no, that thing's rented all the time, they have a right now to report you, you can be fined, you will pay pass fees, et cetera, et cetera. It was an interesting position, and it placed the burden on the one person instead of all of the departments, or, you know, singling it out, and that was literally their job. And they, and they brought in huge revenues for the Ocean City doing that. So it might be something you all might want to think about.
Thank you.
That's it.
Any other public comments? Okay, any comments from the press? Alright, who's gonna take over Dean's role?
I will, on behalf of Dean. Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?